Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our first, actually our second school board meeting of this particular year. So at this time, I would like to call to order the regular monthly meeting of the Newport News School Board for Tuesday, August 20th, 2019. On behalf of the members of the school board and our superintendent, I welcome each of you watching and who are present. Our quorum is present to transact the business of the school division. We will begin tonight's meeting with our invocation and pledge to the flag.
I motion, go ahead.
Okay, so we have to start all over because we were actually in a closed, we were, we actually in a closed meeting, and we have to come out that closed meeting before we start our actual meeting. So for those who are watching and those who are present, so at this time, we'll have our vice chair, Ms. Earl's Law, read us the motion to come out of our closed session.
Whereas the school board of the City of Newport News has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote, and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by this school board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the Newport News School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, I only public business matters lawfully exempt from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in a closed meeting to which this certification applies, and to only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
You heard the motion, is there a second?
Second.
You heard the motion, you heard the second. Time for the question. There being none, Ms. Buffalo, please call a roll.
Mr. Brown?
Four.
Mr. Ely?
Four.
Mr. Hunter?
Four.
Ms. Simons?
Four.
Mrs. Searls Law?
Four.
Dr. Best?
Four.
Motion carries six-zero.
Thank you. Well, okay, now we'll get to the meeting, so I'll start again. I would like to call to order the regular monthly meeting of the Newport News School Board for Tuesday, August 20th, 2019. On behalf of the members of the school board and the superintendent, I welcome each of you present or watching. Our quorum is present to transact the business of the school division. We will begin tonight's meeting with the invocation and pledge to the flag. Here to the honors is our school board representative from Warwick High School, Mr. Nazir Gore.
Please stand while I say the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I would like to show a poem that I wrote called "My Teacher." My teacher once told me to look at the clouds for guidance, guidance that could show me the way to the promised land of education, because I learned that Y-O-U can make a C-H-A-N-G-E. And if that change is good, it's an example to others, others that aspire to be like you, a teacher. Because a teacher, or even a student, can show that friendship can break the differences like your skin are features. And if it, if the change is bad, it can be an example to learn off, an example that teaches kids that bad things do happen, all the time. But it's up to you to get yourself back up and soar. Run, climb until you're out of breath, because that's the only way to succeed. My teacher taught me to aim for the horizon, not the stars, because the horizon will always lead you to a further passage, a passage full of troubles, troubles full of worry, and worry full of fear. But that fear can turn into uncontrollable determination and show that success is near. My teacher said that the sun can set, but it will always keep rising, rising to become the, I said, rising to become the, T-H-E, beacon of hope and prosperity. But there is no need to be a sun, a moon, or the stars, because we are meteors, something that can move fast and powerfully, something that can break up and touch different parts of the globe, something that can make an impact on the W-O-R-L-D. My teacher, my teacher said that when you add all the parts together, you can get a whole. Therefore, if we work collectively, we can find out that you can change the world. Thank you.
Mr. Gore, again, what a lovely poem, and I think we should give him another round of applause. Okay, that's a good way to start off this meeting. We're going to have next is the board recognitions. So Dr. Parker, I guess if you'll join me in front.
Yes, sir.
I have the honor of presenting this month's school board recognition. The school division's business office is responsible for providing sound financial management of the division's resources. One of its most important duties is the management and financial reporting. As a public body, the school division's financial reporting must be understandable, transparent, and concise. This evening, we're pleased to acknowledge that the Government Finance Officers Association has recognized Newport News Public Schools for its comprehensive annual financial report for fiscal year 2018. Accepting this recognition on behalf of the business office team is Mr. Steve Cannell, the accounting supervisor and the principal author of the financial report. Mr. Cannell?
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
The Government Finance Officers Association Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting is the association's highest form of recognition in governmental accounting and financial reporting. To earn the award, the division's comprehensive financial report was judged by an impartial panel and met the program's high standards by demonstrating a constructive spirit of full disclosure to communicate our financial story. The award is the highest recognition that the school district financial operations may receive, and it's awarded to school districts that have met or exceeded each program's high accounting standards. Award-winning reports go above the requirements of generally accepted accounting principles to provide a variety of information, including financial statements, supporting schedules, statistics, and narrative explanations. The award's program is designed to encourage school districts to provide the public with a fair representation of all funds and financial transactions. Mr. Cannell, congratulations, and please share this award and this recognition with all the members of your team. Again, congratulations. Again, Mr. Cannell, congratulations, and we'd also like to recognize those other members of the business office team that are with him. Would you please stand? At this time, we're going to take a short recess. During this time, our viewing audience will have an opportunity to view this month's school board spotlight, so we'll stand in recess for about six minutes. Thank you.
with a little help from some engineering specialists. But these experts aren't professionals or even college students, rather Heritage High School students enrolled in the Governor's STEM Academy. During a field trip to Heritage High School, Marshall's kindergarten students rotated through four interactive engineering stations, completely hosted by the STEM Academy high schoolers. The hands-on activities covered electronics, programming, architectural design, and mechanical engineering with robotics. The information was presented in a fun method, keeping the young students fully engaged with wide-eyed wonderment. As one generation of future engineers inspires the next generation, our students are building a legacy of success that spans decades. Elementary students are on par to chip, putt, and swing their way to a fantastic physical education experience. Thanks to a grant from Virginia Natural Gas, First T National School Program is being implemented at all Newport News elementary schools to offer students the chance to sink their first hole-in-one. For 15 years, First T has prepared educators at more than 10,000 schools by providing training, equipment, and an engaging curriculum. Newport News physical education instructors received their in-person training during the summer of 2018. This training laid the foundation for our talented teachers to pass on their knowledge and skills as the First T program spreads to all 24 elementary schools. Elementary students are introduced to the basic skills of golf by focusing on nine related core values, including honesty, confidence, sportsmanship, responsibility, and perseverance. PE teachers are able to adapt the provided lessons to fit class sizes and each grade's skill level, and the equipment can be used indoors or outdoors to create a fully engaging learning environment. By partnering with Virginia Natural Gas and First T National School Program, Newport News Public Schools is able to introduce students to a brand-new sport as they gain the physical, social, and motor skills needed to succeed. Discovery STEM Academy lives up to its name every day. Critical classroom science lessons overflow into collaborative learning zones, tinker labs, and outdoor learning areas. Recently, fifth graders rotated through STEM stations for a day of light and sound, which complemented their current unit of study with engaging, hands-on exploration. At a light investigation board, the young scientists explored how light interacts with opaque, transparent, or translucent materials. They also observed light splitting into colors by passing through a prism, and how the beams reflected off mirrors placed at different angles. While visiting the pitch and frequency station, students experimented by filling different bottles with various amounts of water to witness how frequency and pitch are altered by bottle size and density. They also tested vegetable cans connected with yarn to see if their voice traveled from one end to the other. At a third station, students visited the outdoor classroom and garden to search for examples of each sound and light characteristic using a list of vocabulary words. Back inside, an online video discussion platform called Flipgrid was used to record their findings and share their comments. At Station 4, the visual spectrum was represented by drops of food coloring and water, and a flashlight beam was used to demonstrate how light only travels in straight lines. As a final activity, students gathered in groups to showcase their handmade musical instruments made from recycled materials and explain concepts in production of sound and pitch. Although the properties of light and sound are common occurrences, these fifth graders have a newfound appreciation and understanding of what they see and hear daily. Lacrosse is one of the fastest-paced, most physically and mentally demanding sports around. Athletes must harness a ball and a web stick to pass, catch, and shoot the ball into a small goal while running full speed to evade opponents who are using their sticks to whack the ball away from the attacker. While popular among colleges, lacrosse is one of the fastest-growing high school sports in America and one of many unique options available to student athletes in Newport News public schools. Menchville High School's lacrosse teams are open to students in Newport News, Hampton, and Picocino, with two club teams for girls and boys. Volunteer coaches and former players devote their time and expertise to introduce interested high school students to the skills, complexities, and joy that are part of playing lacrosse. Even though Menchville's lacrosse teams have existed for almost a decade, many of the current players are brand-new to the sport, so months of weekday practices are crucial for players to learn the techniques needed to manage their stick, run and throw in motion, and effectively read the field at full speed. Lacrosse demands excellent physical conditioning, hand-eye coordination, and mental dexterity to compete. And since many of Menchville's opponents from Norfolk, Williamsburg, and Yorktown have years more experience playing, the learning curve is as fast as the game itself. But these players are up for the challenge to learn and excel, which has been proven game after game. While Menchville's teams aren't lighting up the scoreboard or producing a cinema-worthy Cinderella story, the players have made an impact on the local lacrosse scene. Thanks to positive coaching, Menchville's players are constantly praised for their sportsmanship by officials and other teams. And this past spring, three players from the boys' team were selected to the all-district team. While neither Menchville team had a winning season, the results on the scoreboard can't reflect how much fun these players are having: learning a totally new sport, bonding as a team, and growing into young men and women of character.
Okay, welcome back, and I hope that those who are watching enjoy the school board spotlight. During our meeting, we provide time for the public to address the board. They are scheduled at the earlier part of the agenda and then also toward the end of the meeting. The board considers this an opportunity to listen to your comments. Please understand that we will consider your concerns or get back with you at a later time. Please comply with a three-minute limit as you begin your comments. A green light comes on, a yellow light signals that you have 30 seconds remaining, and a red light in the beep indicates that your time is up, and we ask that you would bring your comments to our conclusion. So at this time, we do have cards today. So first, we have one of my favorite persons, Ms. Jamie Bazemore.
Well, that's nice to know. I hope everyone had a great summer. Everybody asks me, "Did you have a great summer?" I say, "I have a great summer all year, because I'm retired." But anyway, Mr. Chairman, members of the school board, Dr. Parker. I come before you again tonight with my concerns of what is going to become of Huntington Middle School after June 2020. The city basically put a halt to the progress you were making, so we know the delay is going to cause Huntington to close completely if changes aren't made. I believe that would be totally detrimental to the reopening of the school. We must not allow the school to only be on paper. Whatever can be done must be done now. We must ensure that Huntington's doors do not close permanently, something that the mayor's initial vision, something that was the mayor's initial vision, that there be no school on that complex. We suggest bringing the sixth graders back in September 2020, and you, as a board and school division, must take that action now. As always, Huntington Middle School shall rise again. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next card, we have Matthew DeGraves.
Good evening, everybody. Good evening. So I was at the disappointing meeting of the city council last week where they took the vote on the CIP budget, and Ms. Cherry decided to change her vote for the CIP budget that was not even submitted again or revised in any way. And I realize that that's not your problem. My concern is, is if we're not going to be building upon or improving, or if we're not going to be able to get the money from the city council to be able to build new schools or improve the current schools, how do we move forward as a school board without that funding? The problem that I see right now is Newport News wants to become this beacon of technology, and they have the tech center going in and everything like that, and they want to attract people to move in. Nobody's going to want to live here if we don't have good schools. I've seen it, and I told the story at the previous town meeting where they took the initial vote for the CIP of a friend who was trying to sell a house in the northern section of the city. The people that kept coming by and looking at the house thought it was in the Yorktown school district because their school district is great. And then when they found out it was Newport News, they moved on because they were not interested in living there. What can we do without the city council behind us to make our schools better, to improve our scores, to get kids into more active programs? I heard a suggestion at one of the conferences I attended in Richmond in April about having more participation from parents after school programs, places where kids can go. As a full-time parent right now, and my wife is at home with my youngest who's two years old, we don't have the ability to do that, but is there ways that we can help where we don't have to make an everyday dedication to an after-school program that would help out with the kids and make Newport News a better school district, a wanted school district that will bring in the tax money where we can say, "Look, we're bringing in the people to get taxes, now you guys got to do what we want you to do," which is build us a school, a magnet school in Huntington, or revise it and get everything working again where it can be a habitable school without being a danger to the children and the staff that work there. What can we do as a resident of Newport News to help out with that? Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you, thank you. Next, we have Vernon Porter, Jr.
Good evening, school board, superintendent, and chairman. I'm here to talk about Huntington also, but not so much from the rebuilding of it, but about the question of if the old building can be preserved, and if it can be used as a multi-use with education and community empowerment. Save the building as an institution. The only other structure that's as old as Huntington, the old Huntington, the three-story section, is a work, I mean, is a Whittaker Memorial, and of course, that's closed. So my question is if that can be used as a community empowerment building, any kind of education programs that can go jointly with maybe some programs that the city would want to provide. To keep that building open also, if the auditorium could be kept so that plays or any other civic activities could be held, that's the largest, I believe it holds more than Heritage does. I could be wrong, but I think it holds more than Heritage, and it wouldn't have to involve or conflict with any kind of scheduling of the school. And then my last question is, I was told that somehow the city and the school board don't have any kind of agreement where they can work together in the same building, and I sort of disagree with that because they're South Morrison. South Morrison's an example of the city, and at least public libraries working together, but I don't know if the school board has any classes in South Morrison. So my main thing is historic preservation of Huntington, the building, and use it as a community empowerment center. Still build, use the rest of the land area, but if you can save at least that building, it'd be nice if you could save the gym, then Doris Miller and Hampton Rose Boys Club could use it for when they have tournaments or any other community organization would have it. And excuse my nervousness, that's all I have to say. I'd like a response, please, when you get a chance, and if you need my number, I'll give you my number. Thank you.
Are there any more cards? Are there any more cards? Are there any more cards? There being none, we will move the agenda to our next item. We have the consent agenda, item number three, 3.01. We have minutes from our regular meeting, June 18th, 2019. 3.02, minutes from the city council and school board joint meeting on June 25th, 2019. 3.03, minutes from organizational meeting, July 1, 2019. 3.04, financial reports, revenue and expenses, July 2019. 3.05, personnel report. 3.06, requests from Dominion Power for the easement at Lee Hall Elementary School. And 3.07, requests from Dominion Power for easement at Pass Middle School. And that is our consent agenda. Can we have a motion for approval of the consent agenda?
So moved.
You heard the motion, is there a second?
Second.
You heard the motion, and several seconds. It's time for the question. There being none, Ms. Buffalo, please call a roll.
Mr. Brown?
Four.
Mr. Ely?
Four.
Mr. Hunter?
Four.
Ms. Simons?
Four.
Mrs. Searls Law?
Four.
Dr. Best?
Four.
Motion carries six-zero.
Thank you, and at this time, under the personnel matters of that consent agenda, I'm going to pass it over to Dr. Parker.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This evening, we have a round of administrative appointments to announce, and as we move rapidly into the start of school, it's always important to make sure that we have leadership in the right places. I'd like to first introduce Dr. Stinette Bird, our new executive director of elementary school leadership. Dr. Bird is currently serving as the director of secondary schools in Suffolk Public Schools. Dr. Bird is, has been an educator for 22 years. He began his career as a math teacher in Hampton City Public Schools, and I think he attended Hampton City Public Schools, am I correct? Then worked as an assistant principal at Benjamin Sims Middle School in Hampton and at Carrollton Elementary School in Isle of Wight. He continued his career in Isle of Wight by earning principal positions at Carrollton Elementary, Windsor Middle School, Windsor Elementary, and Smithfield High School before moving to Suffolk Public Schools as the principal of Kings Fork High School. And then his current position, his current position is in Suffolk Central Office. In addition, he has worked for many years as an adjunct faculty member at Old Dominion's Educational Leadership Program. Dr. Bird has a history of improving school achievement at both the elementary and secondary levels. We are working, looking forward to great things as he leads our efforts to improve student achievement in Newport News. And Dr. Bird, thank you for joining us this evening. I noticed your lovely wife, Tanya, is not here today, but we'll, at this time, I'd like you to bring greetings.
I'm here.
Just say hello.
I'm with you, thank you all. I'm looking forward to serving this outstanding community. My wife is taking care of the twins. We often, I don't want to be, trying to make sure we get them situated, but it's my pleasure to be here. Thank you for the opportunity to serve.
And thank you, looking forward to your leadership. This evening, I'd also like to introduce, is it Dr. Carnisha Ford, am I correct? Mrs. Carnisha Ford, our new acting principal at Epps Elementary School, just wanted to be correct there. Mrs. Ford is currently serving as the assistant principal at Epps Elementary School, and she began her career as an educator 25 years ago, as a middle school teacher in Tacoma Public Schools before coming to Newport News Public Schools. Mrs. Ford has served for 19 years as an elementary teacher in Newport News. She was moved to the central office as an instructional coach, or moved up to work as an instructional coach to work with teachers, and as an assistant principal in Newport News, and she's now taking the reins of leadership at Epps Elementary, and we're looking for great things. Mrs. Ford, welcome. And at this time, we'd like you to introduce any of your family or friends who are here with you this evening as well. We'll put them on the spot, they're newlyweds, guys. Welcome, and we're looking forward to your leadership and supporting you as well, and thank you for joining us this evening. I'd also like to introduce Ms. Rhonda Chambers-Harmon, our new assistant principal at Epps Elementary School, and Mrs. Harmon is currently serving. And Mrs. Harmon is currently serving, uh, serving us as an elementary lead teacher at Palmer Elementary School. Mrs. Harmon has spent all of her twelve years as an educator in Newport News Public Schools. And welcome, and, and thank you for joining us this evening as well. Do you have any friends or, or family here with you this evening?
Oh.
Awesome, awesome. Well, thank you. We're looking forward to your leadership, and I know you'll do great things at Epps Elementary. Thank you for joining us. I'd also like to introduce Dr. Robert Parsons, our new assistant principal at Crittenton Middle School. Dr. Parsons is currently an administrator, straighter assistant in York County Public Schools. He has served twenty-seven years, um, he has twenty-seven years of experience as a teacher, assistant principal and principal in Chesapeake, CSEP, Newport News, New Horizons, Gloucester, and Richmond Public Schools. He, uh, we welcome him back to Newport News. He's well-traveled. And, uh, I look forward to your leadership. And sir, good evening, and, uh, do you have any, uh, family or friends here joining you this evening? Just met a few? Well, welcome back. Welcome back. So it's good to see educators come back to Newport News, and, uh, we're looking forward to, uh, your leadership as well. Thank you for joining us this evening and welcome aboard. I'd also like to introduce, uh, Ju- Mr. George Massenberg, our new assistant principal at Warwick High School. Uh, Mr. Massenberg has been an educator for seventeen years and is currently a graduation coach, uh, at Heritage High School. And I'm assuming a football coach as well. Am I correct? Uh, he has also served as a teacher in Newport News, Hampton, and Baltimore City Schools. And now wants the big job of an assistant principal. And, uh, we are looking forward to your leadership, sir. Thank you for joining us this evening. And did you bring any friends or family with you this evening? Brother Heritage, the Heritage family. He brought the Heritage family with him. All right. Bittersweet, bittersweet over on that side of the room. Yes, yes, yes. But we're looking forward to your leadership, sir, and, uh, and you're, 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 you're in the right place at the right time. So thank you, sir. Look forward to it. I'd also like to introduce, uh, Mrs. Mrs. Shondlin Thomas, our new K-three instructional supervisor. Uh, Ms. Thomas is currently serving us as an elementary instructional specialist. Uh, Ms. Ms. Wall, as you recall, um, has been promoted to, uh, the director's level position, and Ms. Thomas will take over her role as the K-three instructional specialist. She's, uh, spent all of her twenty-five years as an educator in Newport News Public Schools. And Ms. Thomas, uh, has served as an elementary teacher, a reading recovery teacher, literacy coach, instructional coach, and elementary instructional specialist. Thank you for joining us this evening. Did you bring any friends and families that you'd like to introduce? And thank you. We're looking forward to your leadership as well, and, uh, thank you for joining us this evening. That concludes our appointments for this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, thank you, Dr. Parker. So we'll move the agenda to item number four, four point oh one. I believe there's no action items.
No, sir.
There being none, we'll move on to reports. Uh, first report, five point oh one, back-to-school-ready report. I guess this report will provide us with the various activities underway in preparation for the opening of the school in September.
Good evening, Chairman Hunter, Vice Chairman Searls Law, school board members. There are great things happening in Newport News. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Hunter. That's your phrase. But it's true. Great things are happening as we prepare to welcome our students. Families and staff members back for the beginning of the school year. I'm Richard Wright, Chief of Staff, and have the pleasure of opening this informative report. We're excited to provide our back-to-school-ready report. We will provide you a number of updates on professional and student learning, curriculum development, talent recruitment, plant services, uh, summer projects, technology, child nutrition, transportation, and family connections. I will begin by sharing some of the professional learning that has occurred this summer. In late June, the school leadership department held a two-day Leadership Matters Summer Conference. It was our first K-12 conference for our leaders. It was an intensive learning experience designed to advance instructional equity and servant leadership. Our school leadership teams attended several professional development sessions moderated by school leadership and our teaching and learning department. The sessions were energizing and collaborative. Our focus was on equipping our leaders with the resources to support our teachers and also to empower student learning this school year. It was a first-class experience and a great jumpstart to our school year. And at this time, I'd like to introduce Dr. James Paul, our chief academic officer, who will continue our professional learning update.
Thank you, Mr. Wright, and good evening, everybody. Teachers across the division, both new hires and veteran teachers, had the opportunity to ignite their passion for teaching through our summer learning event, Ignite. This summer, eighty courses were offered that were designed of the N N P S Teaching and Learning Framework and administered to over eighteen hundred participants. These opportunities range from creating an effective learning environment to understanding computational fluency and everything in between. In an effort to better acclimate our new hires to the division, Smart Start was designed to welcome new teachers and get a jumpstart on the learning of our newest hires. With over three hundred and twenty registrants, new teachers were sent welcome calls, invited to welcome centers, and offered specialized classes to better prepare them for their new school year. Highlighting some more intensive professional learning for our veteran teachers, we have twenty-five teachers who will complete their studies with Women Mary this coming spring and earn their reading specialist endorsements. Also, to support our work on equity across the division, two hundred and eight participates, participants from across all of our schools, including teachers, building-level administrators, and division-level leadership. N N P S had a strong representation not only attending, but presenting at this year's Region Two Equity Conference. In fact, our very own Richard Wright was the keynote speaker for the event. His focus remarks and presentation were on point to create a focus around the importance of this work. Of course, N N P S had several opportunities for student learning this summer as well. Our summer program for the arts, recreation, and knowledge, better known as Spark, was housed at twelve sites this summer. A total of over fifty-six hundred students were involved throughout the summer. This learning lab is an innovative approach to ignite learning for our students. The instructional program provides a balance between direct teaching and student application through problem solving. New this year, students received needs-based literacy remediation each morning provided by teachers with the use of a computer-based software, Imagine Learning. The learning lab's STEM-infused curriculum offered reinforcement in the areas of reading, writing, and math, while challenging students to apply their learning through a STEM-based approach. This approach provided a jumpstart to the year ahead by making, by taking students on a deep dive into an upcoming sta- science standard they'll see this year. Following each morning session, students had multiple opportunities for music, arts, and recreation participation. This summer, we also continued our summer training enrichment programs, or STEP, to offer students the opportunity to learn more about workplace readiness. STEP joined Newport News Public Schools with the government, businesses, and nonprofit community to employ Newport News youth ages sixteen to eighteen and help them gain working experience and professional skills. Approximately one hundred and twenty-seven students participated in gaining job skills in food services, lawn care services, computer technology, office management, and childcare. Students had an opportunity to work in over forty sites, being introduced to the world of work. Additional benefits included decision-making skills, collaboration with peers, gaining money and time management skills, and building confidence while gaining valuable networking contacts. This summer, we also launched our summer cyber steam camp. This program was funded by a grant from the Department of Defense Education Act and will be carried into the school year with specific curriculum modifications at our seven military-connected schools. Students had the opportunity to learn all things cyber, including coding, binary code, robotics, and cybersecurity. As you may have seen on the WTKR Channel Three news story on the summer program, our students were more than excited to share their learning experiences. Last, but not definitely not least, we had many members of our division focused on curriculum development. The entire curriculum and development team worked with teachers and spent a great deal of time revising and rewriting curriculum and assessments to better prepare for the start of the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year. They revised pacing to promote stronger vertical alignment. They revised the reading, rating, learning progressions for stronger alignment. All levels of data from benchmark assessments were reviewed, and revisions have been made for stronger alignment to the S O Ls as we, um, as well as necessary level of rigor. The math team has also worked to revise their curriculum to include new math texts that will begin to be rolled out this fall. I'll now turn the presentation over to Stephanie Hots, our Director of Human Resources, who will report on recruitment efforts.
Good evening, everyone. Um, we've had a very exciting and busy summer, and so I wanted to give you my annual update on where we stand. Um, we typically at this point talk about two big areas. Number one is our classroom teachers, so making sure we have um, teachers, uh, to meet our students on the first day of school. Um, at this point, we've hired two hundred and seventy-two classroom teachers, which is a ninety-nine point three percent staff rate at this point, so we're very excited about that. Done a lot of work, had to look at a lot of opportunities of how to staff and be creative with that. Um, as we talked earlier in the year, you're very aware of the teacher shortage that we're facing, and so, um, we, we are very pleased with some of the things that we've been able to accomplish and get ready for the school year. Uh, for bus drivers, obviously we got to get the kids there, so that's the other big area. And as you know, for several years, we've worked um, on our bus driver pay, on recruiting, and, and having bus drivers in place for the start of the year. At this point, we've hired forty-one. Um, at that, at this point, that's a ninety-six point five percent staff. Uh, we do have another event on this Thursday, so we're having an open interview. It's actually going to be held on Thursday from two to four thirty at our new transportation building. That's one-two-five-seven-one, Patrick Henry Drive, so encourage people to come out to be interviewed for bus driver positions. We do have, um, a few more positions that we, uh, need to hire for and get people trained um, so that we can have a great start to the school year. So that's where we're at with recruitment. I'm going to introduce Keith Webb, who is our Executive Director of Plant Services, to tell you about the summer work.
Thank you, Stephanie. Well, it's another busy summer coming to a close for Plant Services. Um, we, we don't sit around during the summer. We stay pretty busy. Uh, here's a listing of some of the projects that we've worked at over the summer and the number of buildings that we did those projects in. You can see we concentrated on HVAC in our buildings and paving projects and some learning cottages here, there, and everywhere, and, uh, it's a lengthy list this year, so there's a second page talking a little bit more about it. Uh, you see, we've got an office remodel, a media center remodel, and a building addition, all of which occurred at Saunders Elementary School. Everything is right now on pace to be a hundred percent by the time school opens. So pictures tell, tell nice stories. Um, the picture on the left is part of the Hilton HVAC replacement project. Uh, that's a boiler. When you take the case off, that's kind of what it looks like on the inside. The right picture is the learning cottage replacement going on at Dunbar Irwin. And the bottom picture is repaving of the tennis courts at Denby High School. Uh, the left picture is, um, an expansion of a project we started last year at Heinz. Uh, we have water problems coming into the building. It's a construction defect from when the building was first built in the nineteen eighties. Um, so we're just getting around and repairing it. We finished up Heinz this year, and we've begun Gilder Sleeve, and we'll probably get that done sometime in the month of September. Uh, the picture on the right is, uh, a port, well, somewhat portable freezer that's being installed. Where child nutrition, uh, through grants and some of their funding, was able to secure five freezers. And Plant Services has coordinated the installation of those freezers at our schools. Uh, with the advent of all the new, uh, eligibility for free meals, uh, they needed to have the expansion of storage area for the food. So the picture on the left is a main electric service replacement of fifteen schools. This is one of them. You can see it's not your garden Verizon house-sized service. The bottom picture is the office renovation project at Saunders. And the right picture is construction of a water garden at Saunders Elementary School, done in conjunction with some EPA, uh, Chesapeake Bay, uh, foundation funding. And just to show that we really do work, um, we've got the custodians doing their waxing. Everybody really likes to have a nice shiny floor when they walk in, and so uh, this is the custodians working at Heritage High School. Uh, the picture in the middle shows new cabinetry that's being installed in all the classrooms at Riverside. We've been trying to get a couple of schools every year, uh, as the funding permits. Uh, the picture on the right is, uh, the hallways at Honey, at Hilton while we were doing the HVAC project. Uh, wanted to try and prevent dust from getting all over the building, so they installed many yards of plastic. So I mentioned that we're working at Heritage High School. These are pictures of the HVAC replacement project at Heritage. Uh, the picture on the left are new boilers that are installed, vastly different from the one that you saw at Hilton. Picture on the right is the ductwork that's going in. It's all lined up, wa- awaiting installation. And the lower picture in the center is, uh, they're lifting, uh, something that looks like a tractor trailer off the ground and putting it on the roof. And that's the HVAC system that controls, uh, one floor of one wing. So we've got a lot of those up on the roof. And this is the new Scott relocation project. The top, the top-left picture is transportation. And the bottom one, you can see our buses being served in that new facility. Uh, the top-right picture is the combination child nutrition warehouse, print shop, mailroom. Everybody has moved into both of those buildings. Uh, the bottom-right picture is the Plant Services Building. It's not quite finished yet. We anticipate moving in the September, October timeframe. And with that, I'm going to introduce my colleague, Chris Jenkins, Director of Technology.
Good evening, everyone. I'm going to suggest that we change the order next year because coming after Keith, I look kind of like a slacker, like I've been standing still all summer. I'm excited to be here to have an opportunity to tell you a little bit about what we've been doing in the technology department over the summer. And before I start telling you about the traditional stuff like the hardware and the number of computers, I want to talk to you a little bit about the professional learning that the technology department has done to build the capacity of our teachers to actually use the technology in an authentic and meaningful way so that we can have a positive impact on students. Um, as many of you know, this is our third year of doing the Innovate Conference. This year, we did it at Heinz earlier this month, and, and we had, uh, some board members. Uh, Ms. Searls Law, Dr. Best were out, as well as, um, about six hundred and eighty attendees over the two-day conference. Um, we had three hundred and ninety, ninety people on day one, two hundred and ninety-six on day two. Um, and we got a lot of really positive feedback. We had about seven hundred people so far provide us feedback on the conference, and overall, the reviews are really good. Um, we're getting about nine point five stars out of ten. We also did get some, some really positive constructive feedback about things that we could do better next year. Um, this is one of my favorite events of the year. Um, it's always exciting to me and a little bit inspiring as well to see how many of our teachers are willing to give up their free time in the summer to come out for two days of professional development. Um, continuing with professional development, this year we partnered with ISTE consultant Dr. Helen Crompton to develop an in-house course. It's a six-week blended learning course that, uh, helps build our teachers' capacity around personalized learning using technology. Um, we started off with a cohort of about thirty teachers, and it's a two-day face-to-face session, uh, where Dr. Crompton spends time with them uh, before they move on to a six-week portion that is online. So we started that in July of this year, and our first cohort of teachers will be wrapping it up, um, before the school year starts. We also, um, have, uh, uh, plans to repeat this, this course throughout the school year with other teachers. Uh, moving on to the actual technology hardware, um, as usual, we replaced a lot of computers over the summer. Uh, we, this year, we replaced about thirty-one hundred student laptops, so Windows-based laptops. We replaced those with Chromebooks. Um, the Chromebooks represent, uh, significant savings for the division. They're about half the price of a laptop. And they also, um, allow the, the students, uh, to get to work much more quickly because the devices boot up, uh, much faster than laptops, so we don't lose instructional time waiting for the technology to catch up. Um, we replaced twenty-one hundred Chromebooks at the elementary schools, and we were able to take, uh, a good number of those devices and clean them up and refurbish them and, uh, move them into some of our secondary math classrooms. We partnered with Mary Parrish in the secondary math department, and we're providing her Chromebooks in the classrooms uh, to support some tools like Desmos Online Graphing Calculator and the IXL program. Um, our, we did some work in our early childhood classrooms. Uh, this summer, we've, uh, placed five iPads in each of the early childhood classrooms uh, to support the new curriculum that they, they'll be using to start this year. And lastly, um, last year, we spoke to you about some STEM carts that we added at four elementary schools and one middle- And lastly, last year, we spoke to you about some STEM carts that we added at four elementary schools and one middle school. We've been able to expand, to add another 19 schools this year. And what those STEM carts contain, if you've visited one of our Technology Learning Centers or TLCs, we've taken a lot of that technology and put it onto a mobile cart, and this really helps us get the technology out to the teachers, especially in schools where they don't necessarily have the space for us to add a full-blown technology learning center. Lastly, Mr. Webb mentioned all the work that's going on at Scott. I'm sorry, my picture is not quite as nice as his. If you look at it, they are actually building the building around us. Keith and his folks, even though the Plant Services building is not done, our Network Operations Center is going to be inside of it, so they, they have literally constructed a space for us to work while they're working on the building. We began the work last weekend to bring it online, and we will continue our work through the Labor Day weekend in order to have all of our systems fully redundant for the start of school. The reason for the move was, there, there were several reasons for it. As, as you may know, previously, our backup Network Operations Center was at City Hall, which presented some challenges for us in the fact that space was limited. We could not have all of our systems fully redundant. And also, City Hall is located in a low-lying area, so in the time that, in a time of flooding or natural disaster, which is when we would need our backup Network Operations Center the most, we may not be able to get to it. So moving into the new Scott facility gave us a much larger facility. It gave us the space and the cooling and power that we need to be fully redundant, and it also makes it easier for my team to be able to access it in case of an emergency. And I want to close out by talking about the division's continued investment in the use of technology to support the social and emotional well-being of our students. Previously, we have had bullying reporting tools available primarily through voice hotlines to the schools, and this year, we've partnered with School Leadership and Youth Development to launch a Safe Schools Bullying Prevention App. And what's really nice about this app is it provides an anonymous way for students to report incidents, and it gives them greater flexibility. We found that most students really are not willing or interested in making a phone call and leaving a voice message or talking to somebody, so we're giving them the option to report incidents by, by phone, by email, by text, through the app on their phone, or through the website. So it gives them a whole host of other ways that they can report it, as well as giving our, our building and central office administrators some central insight into what's going on in the schools and being able to see each incident that gets reported. And that wraps up my part of the presentation, and I'm going to introduce my colleague Cathy Alexander, who's our Executive Director of Child Nutrition Services.
Thanks, Chris. Good evening. Well, I'm excited to share all the summer meal service that we did this past summer. We had 30 meal sites that were operational. We served over 200,000 meals to our students. Breakfast, lunch, and snacks were served at all of our sites, and we were able to employ over 70 child nutrition employees. Our CNS initiatives that are coming up, I'm very excited. We are going to be able to go district-wide CEP this year, and I just got the final approval from the State Department, so all of our students and all of our schools will eat all of our meals at no charge. Really excited about that. After-school fuel is something that we started, well, we've been doing with Parks and Rec and some other programs, but last year, we really ramped it up in all of our middle and high schools, so any student staying after for tutoring or for sports or anything can have a supper meal. And we have, this year, we've had our fresh fruit and vegetable grant for some time, but this year, we were able to add two more schools to have 13 sites. And that is where we offer fruits and vegetables to our student, to our elementary students outside of the meal program. So they, three times a week, they get a snack of a fruit or a vegetable, either a whole fruit or cut up. And that's in hopes that that will inspire them to grab a piece of fruit instead of a chip and that kind of thing. So we're excited to keep adding schools every year with that. And then we are doing some remodels. As Keith mentioned, we have five schools getting new freezers. With our CEP expansion, we're just exploding in our schools and nowhere to put refrigeration and freezers, so we're able to add them on the back docks, which has really helped our space issues. And we're also doing some cafeteria remodels. We started this years ago in our middle and highs and have brought it down to our elementary, and this is just an example of what's going to happen at Saunders next weekend over Labor Day. Well, actually, this weekend. This is what Saunders looks like before, and then you can see the rendering of what it's going to look like. They're getting all-new tables, some with logos, all-new artwork, and also the artwork back in the kitchen as well. So we're very excited about that. And now I'm delighted to introduce Shay Coats, Director of Transportation.
Good evening, Chairman Hunter, Vice Chair, Vice Chair Searls Law, Dr. Parker, and other board members. I'm going to continue with the theme of busy, busy summer. In the Transportation Department, we kicked off the summer moving our staff and maintenance operations to our new Scott facility, and we continue to make it our home day after day to get ready for the new school year. In support of Spark, we employed 143 drivers and 44 bus assistants that transported over 6,700 students for Spark and for other districts' programs during the summer, logging almost 200,000 miles on our buses this summer. In addition to that, our trainers have been busy all summer long, getting new employees, new drivers ready for the first day of school, and also, like Ms. Hart said, the Director of Human Resources, we have a we have a job fair coming up this week where we can get some more people on the road to help us out. In addition to the training we've done, we also are integrating 18 new propane, 18 new propane buses into our fleet. We have them ready by the start of school, and that will give us 62 propane buses within our fleet. So we're excited about that. The drivers are excited about getting new buses. And we expect 11 more during the fall, so that'll give us 32 for this year, which is awesome, as we continue to move on to propane buses. We're going on our fourth year of using Here Comes the Bus. We encourage our families to take advantage of this free technology to be able to track their students' bus. The app is available on iOS and Android devices as well as the internet. We currently have over 20, currently have over 16,000 student accounts with Here Comes the Bus for our district, which is about 20,000, over a little bit over 20,000 students that tie to those accounts. So we continue to roll it out, and it's probably double, double every year we go. We keep on trying to get that technology out to help the parents to know where their students are. Bus stop information, probably the most important thing I'm going to talk about. Calls already coming in. Bus stop information will be available on August 26th after 5:00 p.m. Families can access the bus stop information on the district's website and every respective open schoolhouse, um, school open houses. Transportation personnel will be available at the open houses to assist families who might have some questions there. Any requests, bus requests that are made the 26th, until the start of school would not be implemented until after the first week of school, so we can minimize the changes during that first week. We will, we will also work with the schools and the families during that first week to try to find the closest bus stop for, for them during that first week. Child transportation requests is something we rolled out last year. We put it online, so it gives the parents are able to do that online as well as go to the school. It's been working well for us to get a head start on that. Then we have our frequently asked questions. It's something we updated last year. Provides a multitude of questions and answers for our families. Lastly, but most importantly, is safety. Bus safety and bus stop information are available on the district website. We please ask that parents review this information with their students prior to starting school. We will continue to utilize our yellow card system for our pre-K and kindergarten students. For the first day of school, we will allow parents to use their ID to pick up the student, but we'll enforce the yellow card after the first day of school. If I have any questions, I'll be followed by Michelle Price, Director of Public Information, who will give a report on family and community resources.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'll take a few moments of your time to share with you some of our family and community-focused preparations that are now underway. As in previous years, our website has a wealth of information for families as they prepare to return their students back to school. Registration information and a link to all of the needed forms are available, as well as the school's zone finder, school supply lists, calendars, school schedules. And as Mr. Coats shared, bus stop information is going to be posted on Monday, so that will be available in the back-to-school section as well. And families will have access to breakfast and lunch menus and other helpful information to get everyone started on the first day. In addition to our website, we'll be reaching out to our families through postcards, phone calls, emails. We have a family newsletter going out later this week, newspaper ads, and social media to make sure that everyone knows what they need and where they need to be on the first day. This school year also brings some new initiatives and tools. We are proud to announce the launch of a new family engagement tool called LivingTree. LivingTree is an online communication platform. The application is generously donated and supported by Cox Communications. So LivingTree is going to help our schools and our educators build relationships with families and promote family engagement and support student learning through easy-to-use social, social features available on web browsers and mobile applications. It's a safe and secure network, and it's very similar to other social media, think Facebook. So our educators and our families will be very familiar with its components. For, to give you an example, teachers and families will be able to converse and collaborate to support and advance student learning. Teachers can give families follow-up questions from the days or the week's lessons to continue that learning at home. Teachers can also share pictures and announcements from the classroom. And on the family end, if the parent is the main recipient of this information, they can also invite other family members or other people that help take care of the children after school, like grandparents, they can also invite them to be part of this online portal as well. So everyone can be, you know, maintain up-to-date information as far as schedules and what's going on in schools. What sets LivingTree apart is its Family Efficacy Score. So the score allows school districts and schools to measure the degree to which they are engaging families, and then how that engagement translates into specific measurements for student learning. So right now, we're setting up all of the training for our educators and those in this building as well. So as this begins to unfold, we'll certainly share more information about this application and its benefits with you and also our families. Another new initiative, initiative is the Raptor Visitor Management System that is currently being installed in all of our schools. The Raptor Visitor Management System will ensure that individuals visiting and interacting on our campuses are properly identified and signed in. This new system is replacing some of our paper and pencil sign-ins, as well as some of our standalone sign-in systems. So as part of this new system, everyone visiting our schools are required to present a valid photo identification to the office staff. Once the front desk staff scans the identification card that's provided, Raptor instantly checks the name against sex offender registries in all 50 states. Once the visitor has been cleared and is approved, the Raptor system will print a visitor badge, and it will have the person's picture on it, along with the, their destination and the date, so that you will know that they've been cleared for that particular day. This system will also check for any visitors who've been banned from our school property, and it can also alert the office staff of any potential custody violations right away, so they'll have that information right there in front of them. If a person enters a school who's not supposed to be there, an alert may be sent to school security and to administrators, so that they will know that the front office staff is going to need some assistance. It also creates easy-to-read reports, and again, that installation is underway. Along with that new system comes the volunteer management system. So we are launching this in conjunction with the visitor sign-in, and this is going to simplify our volunteer registration process. At present, many schools use their own, you know, their own volunteer signup. When you go to elementary schools on back-to-school night or open house night, a lot of times, you get this piece of paper that tells you all of the opportunities that are available for, you know, volunteer opportunities throughout the year. Some use an app to get volunteers signed. Well, this is going to streamline the whole application process. So there will be a link on each school's website, as well as on our district site, so it's one place you can sign up. You can indicate, you know, you're interested in volunteering at multiple schools or a specific location. You can put in your interests. And what happens, similar to the visitor management system, it'll go into a queue. The Raptor system will check, again, the sex offender registry. If everything is cleared, it will be released to the school, so then the school has an opportunity to, you know, view that potential volunteer and see if there's, you know, a volunteer match can be made at that location. So again, it will, you know, simplify the process. You can also use a scheduling device there on the Raptor system to schedule volunteers, and it also creates reports for us, so we'll be able to see the number of volunteers coming in and the hours served in each school. And we are also want to remind our families that all early childhood centers, elementary schools, and middle schools are holding open houses, and our middle and high schools are also hosting orientations for new students. Students and parents can meet teachers and principals and get acquainted with their school environment. Our sixth-grade student orientation will be held at all middle schools on Wednesday, August 28th from 10:00 to 12:00 p.m. And bus transportation is provided for students, and the orientation bus stops will be posted online on Monday, August 26th. The middle school open house for students and their families will be held later that evening from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. Early childhood centers and elementary schools will hold their open house on Thursday, August 29th from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. And ninth-grade students and students new to our high schools will also have an opportunity to participate in orientation on Friday, August 30th from 8:00 to 11:30 a.m. And again, bus transportation for students is provided. Families may check our website Monday evening for the bus stop information and pickup times. And then after school begins, our middle and high schools will hold their back-to-school nights for families. High school back-to-school night will be held on Tuesday, September 24th at 6:00 p.m. And middle school back-to-school night will be held on October 1st at 6:00 p.m. Elementary schools and our early childhood centers are scheduling their own times for back-to-school night, and they'll work with their PTAs to make sure that information is disseminated. So families may contact their child's school for more information. And all of this that you heard about tonight is to welcome about 28,000 students back to school on Tuesday, September 3rd for another successful year of teaching and learning. And if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them at this time.
This is Simons.
So I have a question on the Raptor system. So what if you're a regular volunteer who's known to the secretaries of the school? Do you have to scan? Do they have to get out of their desk and scan the ID card every time you come in?
We'd like them to scan it because that's one way we can keep track, for the visitor badge to be printed, as well as we can keep track of hours that way, too.
Oh, yeah, Dr. Best?
Regarding the Raptor as well, you said that they turn and give an ID to the office, and then it's scanned, and then a picture is generated. Is the picture generated from the ID, or is there a camera that takes the picture for Raptor?
The, the picture is, the picture, actually, when you come in and register, and technology, we're still kind of in the process of learning that. The picture is from the first time they walk in, right, and it, yes. So the first time you go in, it'll, it'll take the picture at that time, and then it stores that.
Not from the ID?
Not from the ID, no.
Mr. Brown?
Yes, I, so I chambered my questions. So I'm going to go back. My first one was in regards to, we listed the positions that we are recruiting for the bus drivers and teachers. Were there other positions that are of need at this time, or are these the only ones that are not at 100%?
No, we, we have a couple of, we have finishing up, filling our, our clerical positions. We have some of those. We finishing up the teacher assistants that go with the teachers, so as we finish up the teachers, we're, we're doing that. I'm trying to think of what else I might have from my list. So there are some other opportunities, mainly through TAs, administrative positions. I mean, the clerical positions are the big ones that we have left to, to finish up for the start of school.
Start of school, okay. And the 98.2% for the bus drivers, is that relatively, and I guess in the last three years, is that high, low, you know, what is that in terms of?
It's a little bit lower, not by much. We, I mean, we're talking 12 is what we're looking at right now, is, is we need 12 more in the pipeline. Is, is, we need twelve more in the pipeline to be able to hit that hundred percent. So that's what we're hoping to get on Thursday.
All right, good luck on that. Okay, then I'll, I'm going to jump to another section, uh, which was on the, um, technology, on the anti-bullying app. So the anti-bullying app, uh, if you want to get that downloaded for iOS, Android, uh, where do you go? Is there a link on our website to, um, get that app and more information about it?
So we're going to be distributing some more information about that prior to the start of school for students and for, for staff. Um, and it will be linked on our website with instructions telling them how to get the app and how to do, how to do the reporting. We're just in the, actually, we just met with them today to do, complete the installation and get it set up so we can begin that work.
We considered a bundle, so we now have several, several really good apps, right? We got My Payments Plus and we got the Here Comes the Bus and we're going to have this anti-bullying app. Uh, and then as well, we have the, the Cox, um, app that was talked about tonight. We considered a bundle, uh, such that you can go into, uh, um, the iOS or the Android store and just grab all of the Newport News Public School apps to download onto your mobile device?
That's not something we've ever thought about, but it's a, it's a good idea and we'll definitely look into it, get back to you.
Great. Uh, and that was, I think, my, my one question on that one. All right, thank you. And, uh, my last question was just around, uh, we've done a lot of great work coming into the Scott Center. Um, and I think us as board members are really excited about what has taken place, uh, in Scott and just when will be, uh, a time that we could do a tour and, and, uh, you know, cut the ribbon?
We, uh, we're working with the city to find a date that would be appropriate to do a ribbon cutting. We know we still have some dates, some time available before we can open up the third portion of that project, uh, which will be the, uh, school plant facility. So we're thinking a ribbon cutting around the time that we complete, uh, the punch list items and, uh, and, uh, and the, and the plant services building is, is open for tours. When I visited the facility over the summer, the plant services building was still not available for touring at that time. But I'm assuming there, they've made some significant progress at this time. Um, so we're, we're going to target the September timeframe, but, uh, obviously we want to work with our city counterparts, uh, to see if we can find a, a suitable time to, uh, to get the tours and the ribbon cutting done possibly the same day, which, which will benefit, um, I'm sure the time of, of everyone around, um, on the dais this evening. Um, but we'll, we'll have more to come on that as soon as, as soon as we coordinate a date.
And then just one, one other question, Mr. Chairman, which was around the, the, the meals because I, I want to just be, uh, clear on this piece before I, uh, go out and, uh, uh, put this out in the public. So all of our school sites, every child, breakfast and lunch. And then if you are, um, is it just in the high school? If you're on a sport, if you're on a, a sports or a club team and you stay after, you can get a dinner snack?
It's anybody that stays after.
Anyone that stays after, okay.
Yeah, for tutoring, for sports, for whatever they're staying after for.
Okay, so all, all of the high schools, if you're in middle school and you stay after?
Yes.
Okay, they, they have a, they have the snack available to them as well. So we, uh, all of the school sites, breakfast, lunch, and there's a dinner snack available to, um, kids who stay after for after school programs?
Correct.
Wonderful. Wow, that's, that's amazing.
And our parents do not have to fill out applications.
That is just amazing.
I have one last question. I have one last question for Mr. Webb. So, um, at the end of the, the school year, I know at Warwick High School, the A.C. system was lumbering along. Did they do any work at Warwick over the?
We, we have worked on the air conditioning system there. Uh, the chiller went down over the summer and we got that repaired. So right now, everything is up and running fine at, at Warwick High School so far as I'm aware.
Thank you.
Are there any more questions? Good, um, we will move the agenda then to the next report. We have five point oh-two, our health plan report.
Good evening, everyone. Chairman Hunter, Vice Chair Sorel Law, board members and Dr. Parker. Um, as you will recall, this spring, as we were, um, in budget development, we talked a lot about the financial needs that we had regarding providing healthcare plans for our employees. And one of the action steps that we identified at that point was to go out on competitive bid to make sure that the healthcare administrator that we were using was giving us the most cost-effective, um, plan that we could have or, or contract that we could have. And so this evening, Claire Harland, who is our U.S.I. Health Consultant, um, who we contract with to help us with this very complicated issue, um, is here tonight and she's going to share the results of that particular RFP process and what we were able to learn and what we were able to do and that we'll talk about next steps.
Okay, good evening. As Stephanie has indicated, the purchasing department released an RFP for the group medical and prescription drug program on March first. We received responses from seven different vendors and carriers and, uh, U.S.I. analyzed each of the proposals thoroughly and presented a report to the committee. Four firms were selected to be interviewed. For the medical program, we interviewed Anthem, Blue Cross, as well as Optima Health. And for the prescription drug program, we interviewed Envision RX and Well Done RX. Following negotiations and receipt of best and final offers from each of the firms, the RFP committee unanimously voted to award the medical contract to Optima Health and to award a separate carve-out prescription drug contract to Envision RX. The carriers were selected based on their ability to mir-, mirror the current programs, provide enhanced services, offer superior costs and guarantees to Newport News Public Schools. In total, the combined successful proposals will save Newport News Public Schools' health plans two point seven million dollars with no change in benefits and substantial guarantees against fee increases in the future. On the medical program, Optima Health's proposal includes a complete network that includes all the major medical facilities on the peninsula, including Riverside Hospital and all of the Centerra facilities. And there is expected to be minimal disruption to the current networks in place today. Members will have access to the PCH, S, PCH network and the gatekeeper will no longer be required if an individual is enrolled in the HMO plan. Optima's guaranteed negotiated provider discounts are three percent better than the current contracts in place with Anthem and we estimate this will generate about a half million dollars in savings. Optima's fixed fees are over nine hundred thousand dollars lower than those that Anthem proposed and Optima is guaranteeing to hold those administrative fees flat for four years. Optima is offering a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars per year in wellness initiatives and a one hundred thousand dollar one-time transition allowance to cover any out-of-pocket expenses that the schools may incur as a result of changing carriers. In total, Optima Health's proposal is one point seven million dollars lower than Anthem's proposal. For the prescription drug plan, Newport News Public Schools has decided to carve out the administration of the prescription drug benefit to a separate carrier called a pharmacy benefit manager or PBM. The successful bidder, bidder, as mentioned, is Envision RX. By carving out the prescription drug benefit, we're able to generate significant savings through the presence of stronger contracts for generic, guaranteeing lower generic costs, better discounts off name-brand prescriptions and better prescription drug rebates. The change in vendors will be transparent to employees who will be able to continue to take their same medications at the same co-pays that are in place today. Additionally, Envision RX and Optima Health have agreed to partner together and issue, continue to issue a single I.D. card for employees that will be presented at the ti-, at time of service so there will be less confusion for employees. Envision RX's proposal is expected to save Newport News Public Schools one point two seven million dollars yearly.
So Claire has shared kind of the, the results of that RFP process and, um, with approval from the superintendent, we have moved forward with the selection of Optima and Envision RX for our provider for next year, um, that will be effective January one, as you remember, our plan year start at that point. And so just to kind of give you an idea of where we're at in the process and what this is going to look like for us as well as for all of our employees that use our healthcare benefits. On August seventh, we did convene our benefits committee meeting. Um, we have two of our school board members that are part of that. And so we talked about this process in detail, talked about the, the savings that we incur, that we expect to incur and how we think that is going to be the most beneficial for our employees in terms of moving forward. Today, of course, we're providing, um, this information to all of you as well as to the public, um, about the change. Um, from this point on, there's a big marketing splash here in terms of communicating with our employees. Uh, we will start on August, we'll use the week of August twenty-sixth through the September fifth timeframe to get out to a lot of our work locations in our schools to start, do some small group sessions and to provide this information to employees so they can start thinking about it. And then our open enrollment, which is normally the first two weeks in October, we've extended that an additional week because anytime that you make a change like this, um, we do have to have all of our employees that are going to access their, their benefit of healthcare to actually physically go in and make their selections. Um, right now, when you continue year after year, sometimes if you're not going to change anything, it's like, don't touch it. It'll just keep going the way it is. Well, with this kind of change, we need everyone to think about the options that are there. Not having the gatekeeper, some of the network changes may make, um, have people decide they're going to choose another plan. They, they look at their consumer-driven plan. That is a really good option for a lot of our families and, and individual employees. So, um, it's an opportunity to kind of reassess what they need as well as what would benefit them the most. And so during that three-week time period, we will have, um, open enrollment where our employees will go in through employee self-serve and make those selections. During that time, um, daily, almost during that time period, um, the benefits team conducts workshops and sessions and has opportunities for employees to come in and, and have our assistance to make sure that they can go through the employ-, the actual process and select what they need. So that will go on through September twenty-third through the fifteenth. And then of course, January one, twenty-twenty, we will start with the new provider. Um, and as everything goes smoothly, um, should be no interruptions. I think there are some major things with this new plan that people are going to really like. Being an HMO person, the gatekeeper and not having that is a very nice piece, um, in terms of what Optima does. Um, saves a lot of time and effort often when you're seeing specialists. The network that Claire talked about is huge. I don't know if any of you have sent your college-age kids off to college and trying to have them access insurance where they're at college or if they're traveling, um, sometimes that's difficult. And so this PCH network allows for in, in-network rates as well as access through our plans. Um, so it's a huge benefit. And so there's lots of those kinds of things that are going to really make a difference. And pharmacy, we're really excited about the carve-out to have U.S.I.'s help and really monitoring what is not normally a very transparent industry. To be able to have their help to really watch and to be able to feel like we have some control over the cost of pharmacy is huge. So, um, we're really excited about that. Does anyone have any questions?
Thank you very much. Oh, oh, Mr. Brown?
So, um, in terms of the impact to our, our budget fund and, and what we're spending on health insurance, the same, a little bit more, less, um, than, I'm tracking thirteen point six million dollars last year? Is it same amount that we'll spend on health insurance this year?
Well, the, the savings that you've seen are all on the, the administrative costs. That's the only thing you really can control through, um, contracted services. Our claims are going to be what they're going to be, you know, based on that.
We think we've got better deals in place, but with the way healthcare goes up, we still expect a small increase on the school side to the cost of the program.
Which we provided for through budget, which will allow us to keep the same rates for our employees as we go into the twenty-twenty.
So employee premiums will remain the same?
Yes.
Uh, employer premium is going to increase, stay the same?
The contribution that through the budget has increased.
Okay, contribution is going to increase. We're, we're up in, uh, in total dollar amount. Do we have an idea how much, uh, the school board contribution will increase under this plan?
We, we haven't broken it down by individual person, you know, with each employee and each type of coverage, but we can get that information too as soon as we get it developed.
Just, just a point of clarification, will that fluctuate? Because as individuals choose different plans for the upcoming, uh, year, that'll change that number anyway. So it's a moving target, am I correct?
Yes, if I, if you stay in the same plan, the employee's cost will not change. But if an employee makes a different election, it will follow that election.
Right.
Oh, uh, one of the, so in, in terms of this plan, so the, the way we're administrating it is the same? We've, um, essentially just chosen, chosen a different provider. We're still self-insuring?
Yes.
Yes.
So we're still?
There's still our plans, our plan designs. It's just a different administrator that's going to operate the plan for us. And their cost is what we're getting the savings on.
And I think you mentioned, uh, the city has also switched over to Optima?
Yes, they have. And one of the things that we have struggled with before, you know, is the Hampton-Centerra complex. And that is one of the things that a lot of, like, in my HMO, I cannot, I can't go to Hampton-Centerra right now through Anthem. That is going to be opened up so both the Centerra as well as, um, the Riverside, um, networks will be available through Optima for all of, for all of our plans.
Yes.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we have another report, five point oh-three, our CIP update. Ms. Barry Lou Dusa?
Thank you, Mr. Hunter, members of the board, Dr. Parker, good evening. Dr. Parker asked that I give a brief update. Nobody can do that better than me. Um, I have three slides. The city council approved a CIP plan, um, last week, um, on Tuesday. So, um, what I want to tell you tonight is what the impact for us will be. On these pie charts, uh, on the left is what you requested for FY twenty. You know that the, uh, city has a multi-year plan, but we know that the first year is what they appropriate from. So I'm only showing you the first year of that plan tonight. Uh, the board requested fifty-four point seven million, fifty million of that was for Huntington. Uh, what the council approved last, uh, week for us is fourteen point four million. Uh, ten million is for HVAC replacements, uh, and that's the bonded debt that we'll receive. The other four point four million is cash capital, which is of course in the city's operating budget. Um, two million is for bus replacements, which is what we've been getting for bus replacements for the last few years. And then you recall that we asked for two point four million in additional funding from the city as part of our operating budget and instead they, uh, preferred to give us two point four million in additional, uh, cash capital. So they have funded that. I will say that, uh, you, obviously, they did not fund Huntington in the first year, but in twenty-twenty-one and twenty-twenty-two, they do have thirty-seven million in those two years for Huntington. Uh, I mentioned that we have two million dollars for buses. Um, Shay talked this evening about, uh, our bus fleet going to propane. That's what those green bars are, our propane buses. Uh, and all those blue buses are diesel buses and they are getting older. You can see, uh, maybe you can't see the, uh, age at the bottom. Uh, we have some nineteen-year-old buses in our fleet with some eighteen-year-old buses. You know that the state's guideline is that we replace buses on a fifteen-year cycle. We'd like to get to that. In order to do that, we had requested funding of two point seven million so we could get twenty-five buses a year for the next seven or eight it would take to get back to a fifteen-year cycle. But we are going to get two million and we'll replace as many buses as we can with that. We are paying a little bit more for our buses. Propane buses cost about eight thousand dollars more than diesel buses. We've been getting rebates from the Department of Mines, Minerals and Energy from the state. Um, and we've gotten some grants to cover some of that difference. Uh, at some point, that might stop, but until it does, we'll, uh, take it. Uh, we also get, um, some rebates on the fuel cost, the propane fuel. So we're seeing some savings in fuel. Um, we'll see what happens as we move forward in time. But anyway, we're moving to a greener fleet. See, green, okay. Best I can do. So this is the, uh, two point four million in cash capital. This is a list of items that were in our operating budget that we took out of the budget and are going to be funding with cash capital. Um, it's tiny print, but what is most important is of the project timing, which is in the right-hand column. So you know, because, uh, some of our work we aren't able to do with students and staff in the buildings, some of these projects now will not be able to be done until next summer. So you can see about the bottom half of the list will have to wait until the summer. For example, if you can't read the tiny print, gym floor replacements are not things you can do with school in session because the gym would be out of commission. That's not going to work. Um, Keith talked about some case work replacement that we're doing. That's pretty hard to do, uh, during school as well. It's pretty, uh, intrusive work. Uh, what we will be able to do perhaps during, uh, spring or winter break is the loading dock repairs a gildersleeve. And it's possible that we can do some of these, uh, individual classroom unit, um, air, air conditioning replacements if the principal thinks it's okay and if they have a classroom available to move students to. So the way that that would work is they'd make a classroom available, we'd put the A.C. units in there and then they'd move the students into that and, you know, so round robin like that. But if it can work in the schools that need it, then that's great. The, the schools are Marshall, Nelson, Richneck, um, South Morrison's not an issue. Uh, not a real big issue. Um, and then at the top of the list, um, the cooling towers at Palmer and Passage, we can do anytime. The chiller at Warwick, we can do anytime. Um, and then we need some portable A.C. units that we can move around to schools when, um, A.C. isn't working, but we want to have school. So, uh, those we can buy and keep on stock. So that's your brief update. Do you have any questions?
Meeting, next meeting on September tw- tenth?
Yes, we have another joint meeting with the council and board on September the tenth where- where it's my understanding we're going to talk about, they will talk about Huntington and what they have determined about that site. And we've been asked to share what our 21 to 25 plans are for CIP. So we'll be working with you between now and then on that, real quickly.
Mr. Brown?
Yeah, so Mr. Webb, I mentioned in his presentation, 13 cottage replacements. In terms of the impact, what's the lifespan of the cottages that have been replaced? And then, you know, what is the what is the still ongoing need for the other cottages that weren't replaced?
Well, I don't know, 25, 30 years, just depends. I mean, we can refloor, re-site them, re- we've done all kinds of things to keep learning cottages in place. So the age really depends on how long we need to keep them and how long it takes us to get funding to replace them. It was, we had a meeting today where it was mentioned that possibly as we see enrollment drop at schools, maybe we could take some of the learning cottages out of service. We'd certainly like to do that. And so if the enrollment drops in the right places and we can get rid of them, we certainly would do that. It would take a long time to get rid of our 63 learning cottages that way, but you know, all things are possible. So it's $63 million to replace them all with buildings instead of learning cottages. And that's probably not going to happen in the near term.
Anyone else? Ms. Russo, thank you very much. Okay, all right, back to our agenda. 5.04 attendance report, 5.05 membership report, 5.06 construction report. Those reports were part of your package. Are there any questions on those? There being none, we'll move on to 5.07 comments by the superintendent. Dr. Parker?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. As you've heard throughout this meeting, our staff is ready to start the new school year. I think our staff pulling together a back-to-school report that was both informative and hopefully encouraging. We're excited about the expanded opportunities for students and staff's success this year. And I'd be remiss if I did not mention congratulations to our summer graduates this year. We, last Tuesday, we offered 50 students, received their high school diploma during the summer graduation ceremony at Warwick High School. These students put forth a lot of hard work over the summer to complete the requirements, and they are great models of resilience and commitment to our to other students. I congratulate our students and our families and wish them much success moving forward. During our new teacher breakfast last week, we welcomed over 230 new and experienced educators to the Newport News family. It was an exciting morning. We started with a moving poem written by Isaiah, our student representative here, and a humor story from one of our our Division Wide Teacher of the Year, Mr. Andy Perry. We closed out the event with an announcement from some special guests in attendance. Cox Communications was there to announce the partnership with the school division to bring Living Tree Family Engagement App to all NSNNPS educators and families. Living Tree is a private social network organization designed to connect and engage schools and families. And Living Tree will be deployed this fall. Last week was a busy week. I also had an opportunity to attend an open house event for the Community Nights gift program. And the Community Nights is a local community group that supports public schools and nonprofit organizations. Over the years, they have been a huge supporter of Newport News. And if I'm correct, Mr. Hunter, have donated over?
$5 million? $500,000.
$500,000.
$500,000? To Newport News Public Schools.
To Newport News Public Schools. And as you can see in this picture, they were roughly rounding out to $22,000 this year to some needy initiatives in Newport News. As part of their summer gift program, they've been very generous, and I was glad to be able to show some support that day. I'd also like to thank the Community Nights supporters and encourage anyone who's interested in working with that organization in a fundraising capacity to connect, and we'll be happy to connect you to that to that group. The new school year begins on Tuesday, September 3rd. I want to take this opportunity to welcome our new students and returning students, teachers, administrators, and support staff for the 2019-20 school year. Looking forward to a successful school opening, and I am also wishing you a productive and rewarding school year. And, Mr. Chairman, before I close out my remarks, I want to just close the gap. We normally do not mention transfers, but we did have a an appointment tonight that impacted another administrator's position in our division. Mr. Dr. Reggie Alston, the former principal of Epps Elementary School, will now serve in the capacity of our extended learning supervisor capacity. So he will be running our extended learning programs, and we look forward to his leadership in that capacity. So that concludes my announcements and reports for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Parker. Okay, we'll move the agenda to item number six. At this time again, if there are cards, and I believe we do have one card, Mr. Vernon Porter, Jr., please come back up.
I'm not as nervous as I was last. Okay, welcome again. Hello. I'm calling, I want to talk about your new STEM academy that you built in Magruto's beautiful school. And it's an excellent example of passive solar heating and energy use. But this should also include solar panels, and so that kids can incorporate that in their technological learning. So realizing after looking, listening to all these reports, that that might not have been a priority when it was built, but if you can make it a priority to come back to that in all future STEM schools that you build, that you include solar technology that can be used to teach, you know, as far as technology-based, and also that could be included in vocational training at VOTech, since that's going to be a new green job item. And you don't have to go up 50 feet to work it, like on a wind tower. And the other thing is, I was listening to the gentleman talk about people that might not want to come to the city because of the school system. All I can say is, I chose Newport News because of the school system. My children attended it, my grandchildren attended it. And in my opinion, Newport News tends to be ahead of Hampton when it decides to do innovative techniques or operations. So I would suggest that you go back and look at all your successful graduates, use them as your advertisement, so that when people talk about, you know, the school system's not as good as your county, you can say, yeah, well, we got this scientist here, we have this fire chief here, we have this scientist here, we have this engineer here, you have this mayor here. Now, I'm not sure we have a mayor, but I think we do. I think we do have him. So my whole thing is, and I went to Huntington myself, so, so that's all I got to say. Otherwise, I'd like that we all ran this. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, are there any more cards? Are there any more cards? There are no more cards. So we'll move the agenda to matters by the school board. And, Mr. Gore, you're up first.
Hello, I would like to thank everyone for attending today. The effort that comes from the audience to attend these meetings is truly amazing, and I would like to thank everyone that has attended for the whole entire time. Furthermore, I would like to thank everyone for the opportunity to serve on the school board for the 2019 to 2020 school year, helped make it amazing and, you know, innovative. Additionally, I would like to wish all the students from Newport News Public Schools a productive and educational experience as we move into the new school year. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Bess?
Good evening. It's been a busy, busy summer. People tend to think that schools kind of slow down in the summer. I believe the only thing that pretty much happens is not as many kids are actually in the schools. But I had an opportunity to attend the adult graduation and GED certification program, also the step culminating luncheon, luncheon, and the dedication at Saunders Elementary School for the Learning Garden. And that was a joint project with the Youth Volunteer Corps. And it was an amazing project and amazing thing to see that come actually to fruition, and the students did a fantastic job. I encourage you, if you get a chance to go to Saunders, to please check that out. And I'd like to congratulate everyone that was promoted in your new positions. We wish you well for those new people that are in Newport News. It's the most wonderful time of the year. Many people think that's in December, but for me, it's the beginning of the school year. However, I am a little sad at this time because it has been 432 days since students walked the halls of Huntington Middle School. I'm also sad because the capital improvement plan that was approved, the first funding will not be available until 2021, and then they're saying 2022 as well. So we're probably looking at maybe 2022 or 23 possibly, if things go as planned for groundbreaking. I live in the neighborhood, I pass the school every day. It's becoming an eyesore, and something needs to be done quicker than that. So I strongly encourage everyone in the community that's interested in education to take a drive by the school, first of all. Think about just what could happen over the next two or three years, and to make sure that your representatives on city council know that we need some quicker movement as far as rebuilding Huntington Middle School. And it's still the the most wonderful time of the year. I look forward to a new year. I wish you all well as we go into the new year. I know you'll be working hard as you always do, and I'm looking for great things in Newport News. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bess. Ms. Simons?
I also really enjoyed attending the summer graduation and also the GED graduation. A lot of students worked really hard to make sure that they graduated from high school. And I continue just to be really proud of Newport News Public Schools and our progress in increasing graduation rates. I always remind people that our graduation rate is real because students take a test to verify all of the credits they received. So our diploma is backed up by the standards of learning testing in Virginia. I also am so excited to start the the new school year and all the new teachers that we have, and I congratulate Human Resources for 99% filling those positions. I know that they work really hard, and they do whatever it takes, whether it's social media, Facebook, LinkedIn, whatever they got to do to find the teachers. And I just want to welcome all of our new teachers. We're so excited to have you on the team, and we will just continue to foster your development and make sure that we're your family in Newport News and that this is the best job that you've ever had. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Simons. Mr. Ely?
Thank you. I want to thank everybody who did amazing presentation tonight. You could definitely see they chucked in a lot of time and effort to prepare for the board and as well as the citizens of Newport News, making sure we are abreast of what's going on. So the presentation was amazing. I also had the opportunity to attend a new teacher's breakfast, just to see the energy of all the teachers and excitement of teachers and workers coming to Newport News was just exciting, like, it was just exciting to be a part of this district. So that's really good to see people who want to work in Newport News and be a part of the great things that we have going on. I also want to let the community know on this Saturday, I'll be doing our annual kids' wish list and book bag drive. We'll be having, we'll be giving away over 1,000 book bags and school supplies as well as free food to the community. Come out and enjoy, watch me play basketball, I'm the best. We do a celebrity basketball game, and a lot of fun, good for the community. So if you're not doing anything, it's this Saturday at Doris Miller from 12 to 5 p.m. That's it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Ely. Mr. Brown?
And similar to my colleagues, I want to spread congratulations to all of the graduates. It was wonderful ceremony and great to see all the young folks who stuck through it, persevered, and got a regular, got a regular diploma. They they worked very hard. So last week was a great ceremony, and I think that Newport News were special in that we recognize our summer graduates, and we had the large compliment of the board there, and the principals were all there to shake their hands and give those diplomas out. And I think that it's important, and I think it speaks well of us, that we celebrate those kinds of successes. So congratulations again, hats off to those graduates. And ready now, that closes out this last year for me in my mind when we get through the graduation season, and now it's time to gear up for the next year. So it's it's that time of year again. Once again, it's time to start thinking about our capital budget. This is the time of year that we start thinking about our capital budget. And I will continue to do what I have been doing for at least the last year. I'm going to read off to you. Again, we had a Mosley study that was done. I believe that roughly at least 18 months or so of effort was put into that comprehensive study that we paid for. And on that study, Achievable Dream Elementary School, Riverside Elementary School, Sedgfield Elementary School, Yates Elementary School, Dozier Middle School, Huntington Middle School, and Warwick High School were all identified as schools that were in need of replacement within the next 10 years. And we've already seen what happens, what has happened to one of those schools on that list. So once again, I'll continue to press upon the board that we have to take a, as we think about the next five years and we think about a capital plan, we have to take a very strategic look and make sure that we're being comprehensive and painting the full picture of the breadth of our needs. It is not our job as the board to come up with the money to fund the projects. It's not our job. That's not under the Constitution, that's our mandate. It's our mandate, it's our job to make sure that we request all of the funding that is needed to have the best schools that we can possibly have in this in this city and in this division, to make sure that we request what is needed. So that is that is our job. So let's not, I would say, implore to the board, let's not worry about whether or not it will be funded, let us concern ourselves whether or not it is needed. And we had a comprehensive two-year study that was done that said, and once again, Achievable Dream Elementary School, Riverside Elementary School, Sedgfield Elementary School, Yates Elementary School, Dozier Middle School, Huntington Middle School, and Warwick High School were all in need of serious revitalization, revitalization, replacement within the next two years, or they would be subject to the same type of fate that fell Huntington. So with that in mind, let's be very diligent through the CIP season and make sure that we put forward and put together a full request. And I'll implore the board again that just a few years before Huntington did close, that we debated about putting in a budget that was going to be $200 million, and that was considered, oh, that was too much money to ask for, but that was the amount of money that was needed to keep a school like Huntington going. So let's make sure that we don't make, don't repeat any of those mistakes and make sure that we get the full budget that we need for the school division.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Mr. Chairman, can I comment?
Oh, yes.
I concur with Mr. Douglas is saying because when you talk to some of the city council rooms, they didn't know the condition, Huntington was in this condition. So I, I think we should send them all of this and keep reminding them, these are the schools that need this, so they can't say, oh, I didn't know we needed a new school. So it would be right there that this is what we need, this is what we need, this is what we need. Just the observation to what Douglas said.
Anything else, Mr. Ely?
That's it.
Vice Chair, Ms. Sarah Laws.
Well, thank you. So being on the board one full year and hearing the history of the interactions with city council and the school board, you do wonder how Huntington got left in the state that it is. I am, since I am new on the board, though, I think I have those rosy glasses that tend to be, if you roll up your sleeves and you stay focused on the mission, that we can get the work done. I do pay attention to, though, to what others do, and I am very happy to see the mayor having a budget advisory committee that, whether it's in just in response to what's been going on the past year and a half, or if this is truly the new direction the whole city council wants to take, I will take it. I am serving on that committee as well as Mr. Hunter. And what I like about it is we are able to get the pictures of what's going on in our buildings front and center. They give us reports, and we do the same. We've just had our second meeting, so I'm very, very hopeful that that process is going to serve our city very well. I got the chance to go to the innovate. Chris, that is by far one of the coolest things because, you know, it is amazing to see teachers come out of the woodwork with their flip-flops on and their Newport News shirts on. And if it is a PD that is meaningful and worth its salt, they're going to be there, and they were there, and very enthusiastic. So you and your team, hats off to you all. Let's see, the administration prepping, oh my goodness, thank you so much. What a great use of your summertime, getting us prepared to welcome our students. I think that the hard part ends up being during the summer is we get that that focus time where we can just do those kinds of things. And how to keep that momentum and progress going? progress going once the students come in the building. And I have just been so amazed to see that our team puts the framework in and the foundation in during the summer, such that that momentum does continue through the school year. So, so hats off to you. I got to attend the teacher breakfast. That was very exciting. Our teachers are our tools, they are our resource, they are, they are why we need to do what we do well, so that they can do their job well. And it is really great to see that Cox Communications wants to do this Living Tree with us. It's sort of a pilot, it's been used, but they approached Newport News, and they're very excited, as are we. And then last but not least, I welcome the students back. I hope that you've had an enjoyable summer. My biggest excitement tonight is that we can feed all of you. That, that is just unbelievable. We can level the playing field to bring our students in, having warm meals, knowing that they're not wondering where their next meal is going to come from while we have them. That is a huge success. So hats off to all of the planning for us to be able to do that this school year. I'm excited about that.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Great things are happening in Newport News Public Schools. Let me tell you. What, what happens with this food that everyone eats for free, here's another unmentioned that, that, that will reduce bullying, okay? That reduces bullying. Someone doesn't have food to eat, you know, they don't have to talk, you know, talk down to them, think that their parents are poor, but those types of things that you, we really don't think about what food does. And also what food does, a child that's hungry is not learning. So we are addressing several things by having all of our children and all the students be able to eat all the meals while they're here at our, on our campuses. So good, great things are happening. I do want to, in Huntington's voice, I would like to say I did attend the Huntington's anniversary of this class of sixty-four and class of fifty-five. Many of us up here attended their anniversary this past weekend, their dinner. They actually gave us the mic, and we, we assured them that a new Huntington is coming. So we're speaking Huntington, and they were glad that we were there too. So we've got Huntington on our minds. We got Huntington in our hearts. Ms. Baysmore, a new Huntington will be there. I, I want to say again, happy birthday again to school, thank the school for hosting or being the host building for Ms. Crittenon's seventy-fifth, I mean ninety-fifth birthday. Ninety-fifth birthday, over two hundred plus people attended, well attended. Again, the school is named after her. They actually showed her swimming at age ninety-five during a breaststroke across the pool. So again, great things are happening in Newport News Public Schools, even when you do leave. And to Mr. Potter, you're, you're correct. My wife and I was going to move to another city. I'm not going to tell you which one it was, but it starts with H. But she told me that we're moving to Newport News because the, the programs in the school in Newport News were superior, and I, and I do still believe that, that we are. Sometimes it's not how we start, but it is how we finish. But pretty soon after this year, you're going to see how we start. Once we start fast, kind of like Obama, when you, and you get out there very first, it's going to be no catching us, and I'm not sure we're going to have enough homes to people to come here in Newport News to live. And so that being said, again, I'm looking forward to another school year. To the students out there, please enjoy the rest, your last two weeks. If you haven't read a book, pick one up, so that we can say we, we read one, and I don't care what type of book it is, comic book, storybook, fiction, nonfiction, just get out and read a book before the summer is over, and that's all we ask, and that will help us tremendously to help bring our scores up and things of that sort. That said, if there's no other business of this evening, I will adjourn the meeting.
Thanks for the reading, Pluck.